The North Liberty Planning Commission, could I get a roll call, please?
Ahern.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Heisler.
Here.
Keo. Staber. Vincent.
Here.
Willer.
Here.
Need approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion by Heisler.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Willer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved. Then we'll move to item number three, Lot 1 of Front Street Place, a site plan. And do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, this is a site plan for an RM21 development and you might recall this, this was in front, the zoning was in front of you a couple of months ago. The City Council had their third and final reading at their previous meeting, so the zoning is now in place. What's in front of you this evening is a site plan for two three-story, 12-unit buildings. It meets all the code requirements, at least at this point. Remember, this is a preliminary site plan, so we'll dive more into the details at the staff level once this process is over and they get through the City Council. As Russ had told you, or explained previously, this, we think will fit well into this area. The buildings themselves look nice and again meet all of the zoning requirements and the site plan itself is approved, or excuse me, is recommended for approval by staff. Questions? Be happy to defer them to Kevin.
Okay, and now, is there an applicant presentation?
Except for your laptop. John Mardner with MMS Consultants. As Ryan noted, this is the, for the site plan for the zoning that was recently passed by Council for the RM21. That's two, three-unit, three-story buildings. We've got street access via stairs and sidewalks out to the multi-use path along North Front Street. I know that was one of the topics of conversation during the zoning process, was that this was a good location for this use, adjacent to that multi-use path. It's close to the, to Grant Elementary as well, so a quick access to that multi-use path from the units. And there's an ADA access also from the south along the R.A. Way that then comes back in the east side of the buildings. We've got detached garages. There's one stall, one space dedicated for each. We've got additional parking as required by code. And we've got the access for those garages on the east side. The stormwater detention, we've got allocated in two different small cells, one in the northeast corner and then one centrally located between the two buildings. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. And is there any public comment? If not, then I'll open it to questions and comments from the commission. This is when we can grill Ryan with more questions if you'd like.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, then.
Okay, I think it looks well planned and it's nice to have some green space between the buildings and the garage and have access to that multi-use path. I also like the character of the buildings and the use of the stone and how it wraps around the whole building.
I was having a hard time in the document because the findings reference the vehicle repair, so it's the wrong.
I was gonna mention that.
So I wondered if you had, could summarize the findings you do have on this?
Yeah, so the finding is basically eliminating the vehicle repair use with residential RM21. It would be consistent with the current, excuse me, residential property would be consistent with the RM21 district and the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And then similarly, the number two is, I think is correct. It was just that first one that at the air. It looks like maybe we did a cut and paste job.
Forgot to control fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if someone were to motion, we should motion referencing the two revised findings? Okay, good to know. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to recommend it to the City Council.
I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the two revised findings and forward the site plan to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Great, motion by Heisler?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Tracy, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Ahern.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Vincent.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
Great. We'll move on to item number four, Public Hearing on Zoning Map Amendment. DAF presentation.
Well, this rezoning, in my opinion, is a direct result of just costs of materials and cost of housing right now. And so what the Watts Group is asking for is to have smaller lot sizes, our smallest lot size of RS9 in the preserve for at least a small piece of that. It transitions well, as you can see on the map, from RS4 to RS6, then to RS9. This would be the second time we've used RS9 in the city. The first is, was just recently approved with Solomon Holdings. All those single-family lots are RS9, so we think it makes a lot of sense. We like the variety that this would offer within the, in the subdivision, and so staff recommends approval of this rezoning request.
Great, thank you. And is there an applicant presentation?
Hi. Ryan hit it right on the head. This is absolutely a response to the market conditions right now and the building materials, similar to the rezoning that was just recently passed immediately to the west of this for a block of, I believe, 10 total zero lots, or we took the RS6 lots and rezoned them to RD10. This is, instead of going with the zero lots, they saw an opportunity to go with the RS9 lots and do some single-family housing that gets that price point that is in high demand right now, as everybody knows, and is a little more feasible with the material prices and whatnot that are, that are current right now, so. And I'm available for any questions if anybody has any. I will add, we just recently, the preliminary plat for this subdivision was submitted on, just this past Monday, so that'll be coming forward hopefully at next month's meeting as well, so you have an opportunity to see what the lot configuration will look like.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, do the houses get smaller as the lots get smaller? How does that work?
Yes, to a degree. One of the advantages that the RS9 zoning provides is the five-foot side yard setback as opposed to the seven or eight or the wider side yard, so that combined with the smaller footprint of the house, it's those two things working together that allows them to construct a house that's, again, affordable or more reasonable single-family housing that currently is available right now, as opposed to getting something up into the 400,000 and 500,000 market for single-family housing. This hopefully allows them to provide a price point that's a little closer to maybe four or maybe even see a three at the front end of the number.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And are there any public comments? If not, we'll go to additional questions and comments from the commission. Anything else?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, I move that the Planning Commission accept the two listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Great, motion by Willer?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Tracy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Why did I not script one out? So we're gonna make it up. Willer.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
Vincent.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Okay, so then item number five, a presentation regarding the new City Hall. Ryan's gonna make that presentation for us.
This is a little deceptive because I actually want to talk to you about a couple of projects we have going on, including the City Hall, but this stems from a request at a previous meeting where I think, Josie, you'd ask for some, some information on some of the projects. And so I'm gonna talk about four of them and I'll make it fairly brief. Certainly welcome any questions through or, through it or at the end. And I'm bringing up a project that we completed a few years ago, St. Andrews Drive, and I bring this one up because this is where we kind of kicked off our, what we're taught, what we're calling our placemaking efforts. In 2019 and 20, the city did a branding and visioning process. We had some good community involvement, community engagement, perhaps some of you were involved. But throughout, at the end of that process, in addition to establishing a new logo and tagline, one of the takeaways was that the community was looking for places, places to hang out, places to recreate, et cetera. And so we got to thinking, and thanks to Shive and their team, about how could we incorporate some of these, this placemaking idea in a regular street project? And so we came up with, we, the creative team, certainly not me, came up with the idea of parklets, for example, and our first one was on St. Andrews Drive. It's in today. And it's a fairly simple concept, but we have a bike repair station here, a unique-looking bench, and then some brick pavers and just kind of a concept that catches people's attention. So that was our first approach at this. And then we took a bigger swing with our Ranshaw Way project. And you were just commenting on how cool the landscape looks along Ranshaw, or at least what's being put in there now, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. One of the features, the big feature of this project is a pedestrian underpass that's gonna be just north of the City Hall entrance, and that'll connect to trails and sidewalk to the north, and then eventually we'll be bringing that south in the next and final phase of Ranshaw Way. Well, here, I think we've made a big splash, or we're gonna make a big splash, and I've got a couple pictures here, but you can see how this pedestrian area will look with with the landscaping, in the kind of the center, top center of that page, you're gonna see the a parklet concept on top of the tunnel. And then the design we tried to do on the walls of the tunnel itself. And you can see we're going with a bicycle theme there, and shoot through a couple more of these here, but here's a close-up of the parklet in this particular area, and I think we have one on each side. One on each side, Kevin, is that?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so, yeah.
Yep.
That's what we can see the construction right through those windows for, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And then another feature, again, just another shot of what the art looks like on the wall, but and you'll see we'll have some backlighting in the evening. And we started doing backlighting, our first kind of approach at this was at the pen, or at the bridge on Cherry Street. And we were able to change that throughout the year. Christmas, we have green and red. February is heart month, and we do, we have a request from the Heart Association to light it red all month, and so, you know, we can do things like that here as well. So we're pretty excited about having this particular project completed. And the completion of this project, Kevin, we're talking summer, midsummer?
Yeah, you know, they have plenty of days left, but they, at the last progress meeting, they're hoping to be done with a lot of it, except some of the plantings by possibly the end of May, but it's pushing a little bit, but yeah, we would say, probably gonna go in fall because there'll be some more plantings, but the majority of it should be done by early summer.
So the next project that I want to talk briefly about is the Dubuque Street project, and this will tie in with the City Hall project, which is the final one I'll touch base on. This is how it looked a few weeks ago before they got in there tearing things up. If you've been in that area, some of you have, and you've no doubt seen what a mess we're making there. I promise you that it will improve, but it will take some time. And so just, I'll go back here, you can see this is the original. With that, I call it the wonky intersection at Front and Dubuque Street there, and then here's what we're proposing. The project not only includes kind of a re, revitalizing the street, but also goes into Penn Meadows Park. You can see the newer, the darker gray area, we're doing all that parking, the park drive, and really should, it should be a nice improvement for the park as well. The big, the big couple points on the street is that instead of Dubuque Street going straight through, it's gonna actually turn into Front Street, and what we're trying to do is get the traffic to use the roundabouts at Penn and Front, although they'll still have the option to turn on Dubuque Street and use the stop sign intersection at Dubuque and Penn. And of course have access to Reds and J&amp;A and the other businesses in that area. And then the other big piece of this project is we're dead-ending Front Street, so Front Street will not, once you get to Cherry Street, that'll actually turn into a private drive. So again, we're forcing people to get onto Dubuque, or it should travel a little bit smoother. And then, okay, so how do we get, how do we get placemaking in this project? This is, I think, gonna be really cool. All of this is on City Right Of Way, this is in front of the bike shop, and so you might recall that there's like a turn lane there now. It's kind of a goofy intersection. It's, that turn lane's not needed at all from a traffic standpoint, so we're gonna turn some of that into a plaza area. Again, we're gonna do something similar in front of the ice cream shop, again, all on public right-of-way. And then here's what it will look like across the street. That's an existing gazebo that we have in, you know, Tom Park. So again, here, we're pretty excited about the placemaking that'll happen in this project. We also have talked about, not only in the branding and visioning process, but also in City Council strategic planning sessions, having a vision for Cherry Street. And, you know, on one end, we have the Rec Center. On the other end, now we're gonna have City Hall and Police Station. Seen the fire station has had some, a facelift here recently. And so now we're, as redevelopment occurs along that corridor, we're, will, will push to enhance its identity and of course, just kind of update the facades along that roadway. So we think there's a lot of potential there. Of course, it'll take time. Nothing happens overnight, but we do think there's a lot of potential on that Cherry Street corridor. And then lastly, City Hall. And so I just mentioned the two other buildings that you're seeing in this photo. And we kind of came up with this idea, that's dozen years ago now probably, of a civic campus. And so where your, where the police station is at and where the future City Hall is at, was made up of several older homes, most of which were rentals, were not in all that great shape. So we ended up purchasing them, relocating tenants, and then demoing the homes in that area to make way for the civic campus. So the police station opened in 2020, they got in there, and the next phase of that is City Hall. And how might we incorporate placemaking in a boring city building? Well, we're gonna give it a shot here, and what you're seeing on the right side of this screen is what we're calling a pedestrian or events plaza, where we could host small events, could have, whether it be a farmer's market, maybe it's music in the park type of a thing, but we're really excited about the potential here. I'm gonna give you a couple other shots. This, so this room is adjacent to that plaza, what you're seeing here, those windows, and those windows actually will slide open, and so we could have an indoor-outdoor event. Which we're kind of really excited about to see what, you know, what opportunities exist there. Again, people will have easy access to both the inside and outside, and it could really be a spectacular place to hang out, I think, or for them. Here are a couple other, a couple other shots of what we're planning for, for that area. Now, I will say that what you're seeing here is the full build-out, and I'm sure Kevin's sweating over there because as we are pricing things out, the project keeps going up and up, and at some point we're drawing a sand in the line and saying, here's the budget, which right now is at 9.9 million. The plaza, at least the full build-out of the plaza, will be the first thing to get delayed, I'll say. And so we have a couple bid alternatives in the specifications. We're hoping bids come in well and we can accept both alternatives. Be able to accept one, or maybe neither, but we'll, we'll see how that shakes out. Shive Battery's been pretty impressive so far, and the two bids we've had in the last couple months have been under or right at estimates, so no pressure, Kevin, but that's what we're kinda on here. And here's another shot of the, of the plaza area. Shot there, and then I wanted to, I think that was it for the, was there more photos on our website if you're interested, and we actually have a bunch of them on our file system, if people want to see more. I'm gonna take you back to one other one. You might ask, what about potential growth, future growth? And you can kind of see in this picture, there's a white line in that yard area. See it right here? This would be the potential down the road, guessing none of us will be here for an expansion if, if and when that's. So just a, just a couple more minutes here, not even, but just a couple of points on the City Hall. We're looking at about a 17,000 square foot facility, this new, new facility is. We're actually gonna be taking, right now, we have several departments in these two buildings here on campus, and then our communications department is over at the Rec Center. So we'll have communications, planning, legal, HR, and administration, and building all under one roof. That's about, I did my math right, about 21 and a half full-time employees, or FTEs. The facility should, at day one, easily hold 30-plus employees. And then as we continue to grow, if we need to divide some offices or divide some conference rooms, we can do that to create a little more space. So we should be good for quite some time with this new facility. And I think I will leave it at that. And one other comment, that new, the expansion space I just talked about would double basically the size of this building, so they should be, the city should be good for years in there to come up with space. So I'll leave it at that, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So is there a program for, an opportunity for donors? I'm not volunteering, but is there an opportunity for donors to be able to finish out, say, the landscaping and the parklet and everything?
There isn't. For a couple of reasons. One, we thought it would be difficult to raise money for a City Hall, or something associated with the City Hall. And I appreciate your interest because we are gonna be working on a significant project at Centennial Park, where we'll be asking for sponsors and donations. And so knowing that.
It's a little sexier than a City Hall.
Well, we think so.
That's to finish out the master plan there?
Yes, yeah. Entertainment venue, a large splash pad. So we'll, we'll get you on the list.
But if some, if somebody were willing, would, would wanted to donate, we would welcome donations for anything and everything citywide.
I'm sure there are people in the city that would.
It would be very welcomed.
What's the goal for having all the staff in the new City Hall, and like when we would start having our meetings in there, what year, or what's that timeframe?
Great question. Lease on this space runs out in June of '24.
July 1?
I've, Kevin has said June of '24 is when we'll be in there. I keep saying May of '24, so somewhere in that area.
That's great. That was great information, and seeing the whole scheme of it was nice. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Somebody who gets to play ball at Penn Meadows, I'm very excited to see the parking and intersection improvements.
More room for, in front of the ice cream shop, I know.
Yeah.
Maybe people want some in front of the bicycle shop too, but I know the ice cream shop, we always. But I know the ice cream shop, we always get big crowds there.
It'd be nice to see a tie Penn Meadows and then the city area and then the rec center. And if that link is reinforced there and then on to the pond too.
Okay. Well, let's keep moving then. Item six, approval of the previous minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the previous minutes.
Motion by Ahern?
I'll second.
Take the second by Heisler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. Any old business? Any of you guys have any? No? New business or next month's agenda, any ideas there from?
Well, you heard John.
Yeah, we got one.
Flimery plat, I don't know of anything else at the moment. I do think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Becky Keough has submitted her resignation. I think you all saw that. She certainly has been on the commission for a number of years and has been a great asset. We're gonna miss her, she's moving to Michigan, so best wishes to her. And I believe we'll be advertising for a new position, or a new.
We're in the process of advertising right now for board and commission vacancies. So if you have neighbors or friends or anyone else that would be interested in serving, this would, we'll fill it with this round of applicants. Great, okay. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second that.
Second by Willer. Meeting's adjourned.